Rest of the week.
He wrote this whole big thing out.
Joe, do you know if Jeff's gonna be here?
Dan Ham.
Pardon me?
Is Jeff gonna be here?
I don't believe so. I think he has class tonight.
Okay.
All right, I think that meant at seven o'clock. Lynn? Call the meeting to order and start with the invocation.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be together tonight on the day after Martin Luther King Day. And we are grateful for our community, Lord. We're grateful for the progress that we're making even though we know that there are things yet to tackle. And we ask that we all be mindful of those that may be different from us in any way, and that we take their needs and their opinions and their concerns into consideration as we work to represent them as their council members. Thank you for the opportunity we have for our city to grow and the things that we'll be looking at tonight that point in that direction. We are truly blessed where we are, and we are grateful for that. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, Diane. Let's jump right into the approval of the minutes from the first meeting of the year. Those have been presented on Board Pack. Were there any corrections, or is their motion approved as presented?
I saw a move.
Thanks, Jerry. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Cindy? All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes six to zero.
All abstained, Mayor.
Oh, passes five to zero with one abstention, and let the minutes reflect. Councilman Gross is absent.
Got it.
Thank you. All right. Welcome to our visitors. Good to see you all. Thank you for coming tonight. Let's, I guess the December fund report has been presented, so Lynn, any comments?
No, it shows the distribution that we got in late December or from taxes, so our funds are a little bit higher maybe than they will be in four months from now.
Right, very good. So that's the December fund report, and just for your information, it shows the full 12 months there, so it's a, that's a good one to hang on to. And reference shows the amount that was spent and the balance at the beginning and the end of the year. It's always good when there's more at the end of the year than at the beginning, so.
It's always a big sign.
Yep. All right, no unfinished business tonight. Let's dive into new business, and I will start. This is an oath of office for Councilman Clonderis. It's actually for the Redevelopment Commission. These oaths have to be completed by the end of the month, and the Redevelopment Commission did not meet this month and will not be meeting, so we thought we'd just get his oath of office for redevelopment knocked out today. So, Mike, do you want to stand it?
Certainly.
All right, Michael, you can raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I'm Mike Clonderis.
I'm Mike Clonderis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully, partially, and diligently.
Partially and diligently.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Redevelopment Commission.
As a member of the Redevelopment Committee.
For the City of Warsaw, Indiana.
The City of Warsaw, Indiana.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right. You can make an official here.
Now, do I need to get some warning from council?
No, nobody does.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's new here, are they?
Well, I didn't, I wasn't here last week. I didn't.
Sometimes it feels that way, but.
Oh, I didn't say that. All right, thank you.
I guess I forgot. Yeah, it's one second before it.
Yes.
Nice point.
All right, thank you. All right. There you go. Thanks, Lynn. All right, and we will acknowledge a conflict of interest disclosure for Josh Finch. I think there's anything too much to be concerned about here.
Oh, let's see, nothing showed up on ours.
What's that?
Nothing showed up on the Board Pack conflict of interest, so I didn't know what it was for. But Jerry has it printed out.
It's not on yours?
No, mine is just blank.
The one that showed up when we looked at Board Pack earlier this week just had Josh's signature, but it seemed to be a blank. But now, looking tonight, there's a filled-in description.
I just turned it on, and it's not on my computer, so.
You know, mine doesn't have a filled-in description either. Let's go ahead and, we'll do this at the next meeting. You know, because there's.
Mayor?
Yes?
In February, we're gonna have a whole collection of them, so can we just bring it back at that meeting?
I'm fine. It's just some don't have it. I don't have anything filled in on mine, so I think it's best that we'll just bring this one back.
Do we need any kind of?
Who didn't have one on their Board Pack? Diane? Does everybody else's have a?
Mine's blank, too.
Yours is blank, mine's blank?
Yeah, mine started out kind of, you know, wiggly, but it's in there now.
Okay.
I can read Jerry's. I mean, I can read.
Yeah, mine's here.
Well, I'll leave it to the council if you want to consider it. I mean, it's, I would ask someone to read it to me because I don't have the verbiage on mine. I won't be voting, but it would be good to know.
Joe, would you like to?
It's all filled in. It's all filled in in mine.
Well, Josh could probably just tell us.
So I can summarize it. So Josh filled out his uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement as required under Indiana Code thirty-five dash forty-one point one, or forty-four point one dash one point four. He said he is the District Two City Councilman for the City of Warsaw. He lives in Cosco County, and that he is involved with the city-county athletic complex, that in two thousand twenty-one, he began serving as the President of the Board of the CCAC, is also a member of the Warsaw City Council, and that the CCAC is expected to receive grant money annually from the City of Warsaw. And he wanted to disclose that potential financial interest as the President of the Board of the CCAC, although he has no personal financial transaction or gain in that. He asked me about this earlier, and I said it's always better to disclose any potential conflicts that you might have, so the public's aware of it and nobody's concerned, but he brought that to the attention of this council, and that's what he's disclosing to you. And I personally see no problem with him being the President of the CCAC, even though they are receiving grant funding from the city.
So there. You all good with that?
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion then to approve it?
So made.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Who made the motion, please? Thank you.
All right.
You know, I'd like to ask, Lynn, I dropped mine off the last, that last weekend in two thousand twenty-one to your office. Have you got it, or?
Yeah, I'll double-check tomorrow.
Okay.
It's probably in Ohio, with the bar collective. We've got a few others, too.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Josh. Let's move on to item number three, Resolution two thousand twenty-two oh one oh one. This is a designation of an economic revitalization area. What you have on your packet is a notice of public hearing for tonight's resolution. So that is the first item that's on there. It shows that it was properly advertised. And then item two is Resolution two thousand twenty-two oh one oh one, where you will be asked to vote to designate that area a economic revitalization area, which then allows you to grant a vacant building tax abatement if you so desire. So Jeremy, or Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This morning, at about ten thirty, I received the final legal description for the portion of the overall real estate that Rural King will be purchasing. I apologize for not being able to get this to you earlier.
They all, I put it all on. They all have that information, unless they want to see bigger maps, Steve, because I just have a little map.
Can't afford to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you are aware from the first hearing, when you approved the declaratory resolution, this will be proposed as a Rural King store. They have purchased the property from the current owner or in the process of finishing that now. They will then go in, renovate the store at a cost of approximately a hundred, or a million five hundred thousand dollars, and you will then see it branded as Rural King. Once that store is renovated and opened, there will be fifty-five full-time employees, excuse me, and the request for abatement that was preliminary, preliminarily approved last month was for a five-year abatement, a hundred percent the first year, eighty percent, sixty, forty, and twenty during that five-year period. The building has been empty since two thousand nineteen. One year will qualify it as a vacant building for tax exemption purposes, so we have three-plus years under our belt. It has been marketed extensively with no takers. The last marketing taking place, trying to rent it for somewhere between seven and twelve dollars per square foot, that did not occur. So tonight, we're having a public hearing on the request for the approval of the abatement and acceptance of the SB one form that was filed by Rural King, and I will step aside to see if there's anyone who wants to make a comment at the public hearing.
Jeremy, I'd ask for you to come up if you've got any comments on this before I open the public hearing or answer any questions from the council. I know the one question I had for you was regarding the improvements as being a part of the abatement, and you did confirm that that is indeed the case. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it'll be a complete abatement on the property, yeah. Typically, in a situation that's not a vacant building, you only abated what is improved, and this scenario, abate the whole for those five years.
Okay.
So is the public hearing, I thought the public hearing was to designate this as an economic revitalization area.
It is.
It is.
Yes.
Okay, and then after it's so designated?
Yeah, that's next. That's item four.
Okay.
Yeah, after it's designated an ERA, then you can approve an abatement within that ERA.
Just wanted to clarify, because I didn't think we had public hearings on tax abatements, but on the revitalization area, we would, okay.
Yeah, and the abatement schedule is part of the request for the economic revitalization area, or at least it's in my packet that way. That's why I asked Jeremy a question.
Yeah, ours are listed separately, so I just wanted to check.
And we've obviously done this before, designated certain areas as an economic revitalization area, so that we could indeed extend those inducements, if you will.
Yes, and specifically, we've done a number of vacant buildings. Prior, there was a cap on the vacant building to three years. That does not exist anymore, so it's really up to you as a council to what you want to see.
All right. Any further questions of either Jeremy or Mr. Snyder? All right, so with that, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of the petition? Anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of the petition? Hearing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone wishing to speak against the petition? All right, with that, hearing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council to make a decision on Resolution two thousand twenty-two oh one oh one.
Joe, just in response to Diane's question, the statute specifically permits the application for designation as an ERA to be combined with approval of the specific abatement within that ERA, and they are combined in the confirmatory resolution that's in front of you.
So we are considering that the request for a five-year abatement.
Correct.
Okay, with the follow, with the schedule stepped, stepped down a hundred percent, eighty percent, sixty, forty, and twenty. And that was the genesis of my question to Jeremy, was that if I remember correctly, the last time we did a vacant, a dinosaur building, if you will, it was only allowed a three-year, and it appears that that's changed.
Yeah, the statute has changed. How he's presented this is fine, there's nothing wrong with that. You've seen it both ways. You've seen an ERA presented as a district, which would not include an individual tax abatement. What he's presenting is a district that includes that individual tax abatement in the ERA. We've done whole areas of ERAs where it wouldn't necessarily have a specific tax abatement, but would make all those properties within that economic revitalization area eligible for tax abatements.
But again, my question, for just clarification, the statute has changed such that the vacant dinosaur buildings are not, they're allowed more than a three-year, but it used to be three years.
So, yeah, when they changed the statute, I don't know, three or four years ago, where you, as a council, now set the schedule. You can set the years, you can set the amount abated. There's no set schedule. It used to be you would have a ten-year, or a five-year, or a three-year abatement, and they would have pre-scheduled amounts. That doesn't exist anymore. You can set the number of years, however many you want, and you can set the dollar amount abated however you want within that framework.
Okay. All right.
When I discussed this with Steve, and he was requesting the five percent, or the five-year, I told him to include the statute as if it was part of that preregistered dollar amount in previous state statute. So those percentages you see would have been for a five-year abatement at the old format.
Okay. I do have a little insight as to why the legislature changed that from a three-year limit before to now a maximum of up to ten years. And the discussion in the legislature was that if you have a new building coming in, you will abate that typically if it is approved at a hundred percent the first year. And they looked at buildings that had been vacant for this period of time and did not appear ready to be occupied. The same is coming in and constructing a new building. They wanted to encourage the use of those vacant buildings rather than going somewhere else and building a new building. It would, it would rehabilitate, which is the intent of economic revitalization areas.
And that makes sense. Makes sense to me. Thank you. All right, so what's your, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, reapprove Resolution two thousand twenty-two zero one zero one.
All right, motion made by Diane. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thanks, Steve, appreciate it.
Thank you. If you would email to me, we have all six of you on, they're here in the board.
Okay, and is this for twenty-one, page twenty-two?
Yes. No, it's twenty-two, payable twenty-three.
Okay, I'll let you fill that in, Steve, fine.
Okay, so we've approved the abatement schedule, but now I suppose we actually have to approve the abatement. Is that correct?
With the approval of that confirmatory resolution, both are approved.
Okay, so item four, the tax abatement, that just shows the SB one that breaks down the proposal as far as the existing values and the improvements that are going to be made, and the number of jobs. So evidently, no action needs to be taken on item four due to the resolution including the abatement schedule.
So just a question for clarification, is it for real and personal property?
No, it's only for real property.
For only for real property?
It only applies to real property.
Okay.
And the improvements?
It doesn't apply to real things. It only applies to the improvements located.
Got it. Okay.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay.
And thank you, Rural King.
Let's, yeah, and Steve, any comments on their timeline? Are you allowed to say?
I wish I could have some for you, but I don't know.
All right.
I know they are in the process, but part of what that survey was that I got this morning was moving forward.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to item five. Jeremy, we have another annexation for residential purposes. Should be out at Granite Ridge, and I'll let you take over.
Yes, so much like the last time, this is kind of the first step in the process. They have petitioned the city for annexation. You're not necessarily approving anything other than acknowledging receipt of the petition, after which I'll prepare the rest of the documents for your either approval or disapproval of the actual annexation, but as of this point, they're just petitioning for annexation. I did provide a map, so if you have any questions about where it is, but roughly, it's south from the existing Granite Ridge subdivision.
So if you ever get your map, my map's upside down. But if you can see where Hemlock Lane is, that's a stub road, and that would be the extension into that vacant property to the south. And how many acres is that, Jeremy?
Forty, I think.
Okay.
I think it's in here. Forty, yeah, forty point three two four. So roughly forty acres.
So again, no action required other than acknowledging the legal description of exactly where this is, and that information, the fiscal plan and all, will come, I believe, at the next, next meeting.
Yeah, there's an advertised public hearing, I think twenty days. I'll have to get that advertised, I'll work with them to get the advertisement in the paper. There'll be an ordinance and a fiscal plan. You'll approve the fiscal plan prior to the ordinance. You'll read the ordinance twice, one at a public hearing, adoption of the ordinance, and we'll record it, and then it'll take effect.
And this is similar to the last one. It's a single owner, so this should go fairly smooth.
Yeah, it's one of the properties we've been working with developers to develop into single-family homes, and it will be when we annex it in, and we'll do the, the intent is to add this into that southern TIF district, residential TIF district as well.
And as you may know, we're investing in a lift station down in that area.
Yeah, we're working on that now with a developer engineering that and hoping to put that out to bid early this, this spring, so we can start construction. They want to start homes as well, so hopefully, we'll have this done and ready to go yet this year.
That stays on the east side of the railroad track, right?
Yes, for now. The same property owner owns the other two tracks, so the lift station that we're designing will service those two tracks as well, but for now, they're only annexing, they are, the developers purchasing just that property.
The two tracks to the west?
Yes.
Since you brought it up, that's a good segue. I was going to ask you after we discussed it, but I'll ask now. One thing that jumps out at me here is that for people who are going to be building, living in there, the only way in and out of there is on Park Ridge Road, which takes people out to County Farm Road. Do you foresee, Jeremy, any future possibility of people being able to access this part of the neighborhood from and to State Road fifteen?
I don't, because of the railroad, I'm not fairly confident they're not going to give us right away over that railroad, because they, they don't want the conflicts they have now, let alone the future conflict. But I do know I have discussed with them a ingress and egress out to two hundred south. I know that they have purchased that property, that's kind of funny shape there, and I'm sure we will negotiate with them that ingress, egress. I mean, to them, there's really no value to them, obviously, but there is value to us.
Absolutely.
So I've had conversations with them. They have not presented, at this point, a plat to us. At such time, they do, we'll discuss that southern ingress and egress.
I, I would encourage that. I think that would be an important.
I've made them aware that we want to see that.
Thank you.
Now, what form that takes, and maybe we assist with the residential TIF in that, in making that ingress and egress, but, and you'll probably see that through the Redevelopment Commission, but that's a conversation we're going to have.
Okay. Last question, what's the box between the tracks and State Road fifteen? Is that the lift station?
No, I don't, I'm assuming at one point in time, that was maybe part of the original farmstead. The house has been torn down. It's just, it's still the same owner, it was just a separate lot.
That looks like.
There was a house and barn sat there.
That's about where that dirt road goes, isn't it?
Yeah, it's been torn down. I don't know when they tore it down, but it's been some time. The same property Summers owns all three of those parcels, and he owns the little cutout there.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Mike, and just for clarification, there is a, and I know it's not very direct, but there is a way out on Falcon Drive to two hundred, so Park Ridge isn't the only ingress and egress. You can work your way back to two hundred south, but it's not a really direct, straight route. But I agree, that subdivision would be pretty cut off.
It would be nice for safety reasons, and I'm sure the department will want to see the same thing, to have that.
Well, it would free up some traffic on Ranch Road, for sure.
Yeah.
And it would keep people from having to drive through the neighborhood, especially, it's probably a, a young neighborhood with children, bicycles, and, you know, rather than have to drive clear through the neighborhood to get where you're going, it'd be nice to have some access out to a main thoroughfare, whether it's two hundred south or State Road fifteen. It's just a thought, and I just wanted to ask.
No, I think we're on the same page. I mean, I'd like to see that as well, and I've had, preliminary conversations I've had with them is that we would like to see that ingress and egress.
Yeah, I think it's.
I realize it doesn't have any value to them, but it has value in terms of connectivity for those three subdivisions, whether it's Eagle Crest or Park Ridge. To have three potential ingress and egresses out of that larger development is to the benefit of the city.
All right, any more questions, comments? All right, Jeremy, we'll see you back next month, I assume.
Probably, I guess, like I said, we'll have to do the advertisement, I think, in twenty days. So the ordinance wouldn't be presented, but at some point, we'll be back with the fiscal plan. Might be the second meeting in February.
All right. All right, any other matters come before the council?
Just, I see Kim Hart in the audience, and I'd like to welcome Coldwell Banker to the downtown area.
We're happy to be in the downtown area.
Just down in Buffalo, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Wonderful.
I have a little something to share, if you'll indulge me for just a minute, maybe give you a reason to watch the Olympics. It's kind of a long story, so I'm gonna give you the Cliff Notes version. My wife has a sister, my wife's from Sweden, you may or may not know, and she has a sister who is a Stockholm girl, but she met this young man and moved up to northern Sweden, and where she's lived, she's had an advertising business. He was in the ski business. He had a couple ski shops. There's three major ski lodges, areas up there. They live in a village with, well, it used to be fifty people, so it's not like the village at Winona. This is a village, and it's literally in a crook in a road, and that's where the bus stops. Anyway, they had two daughters, and I remember these little girls being pulled by Marie, is her sister's name. She had this harness, and she had these straps that went back with this little sleigh, I guess, and she pulled the girls while she skied. Anyway, so the youngest girl, her name is Elsa, and she is rated number one in the European slalom Alpine skiing, and last week, she was put on the Swedish Alpine skiing team, so she's going to be going to the Olympics.
Oh, cool.
So if any of you know my wife, there's a little bit of a reason to watch the Olympics this year. Her name is Elsa Farmbek. She's twenty-three, and I imagine that this will be the first of several appearances in the Olympics. So I just wanted to share that with you and the community, just for fun.
Good for her. Congratulations. That'll be fun. It's always good to know someone that's playing.
Yeah, yeah, just the nicest, nicest young lady. I mean, you would never know, and I'll tell you, the, what these, what these athletes have to do to get to this level of competition is just really unbelievable. She would, you know, get up at five in the morning, and five in the morning in Sweden is really dark and cold in the wintertime, and you've gotta go out on the mountain and drill in the ice and put in your stakes, and they turn on the lights for you, and you're running down the mountain before most people are up. It's grueling. She lives out of a suitcase. She travels all over, but I just wanted to share with you, to give you something to watch at the Olympics.
Great, that's wonderful. That's good news.
Thanks, Ray.
All right, anyone else? So I got just a couple things I want to mention. We will be getting out to you to prepare for next month's first meeting. I sent this afternoon some information. I've had Baker Tilly do an analysis of the business personal property tax in our community. The reason we did this was that the, right now, at the legislature, there's a move to reduce, potentially eliminate, the business personal property tax in our community, and a lot, in all communities, not just our community. It's a reduction in revenue for all communities, and we wanted to see how it would impact, specifically Warsaw. This report that I sent out gives you a pretty good idea. It's an analysis of if we lost twenty-five percent, fifty percent, or all of the business personal property tax. You can't actually go in and do an actual analysis, because it would be based on each tax form, based on the life and the age of the equipment, and it's a very painstaking process that really cannot occur until this maybe does happen. But these estimates will give you an idea of how this will impact. Essentially, what would happen is that our circuit breakers could go up significantly from maybe six, seven hundred thousand dollars up to, if we lost all the business personal property tax, it would go up to about two point four million.
Wow.
So that's a loss, obviously, to the city. It also has an impact on any residential taxpayer who is not at the circuit breaker at the one percent. Their residential property taxes would go up as well, and I've shared this with a few of our legislators, because I wanted them to know where we stand. It would have the impact of dropping our assessed value. In 2021, our assessed value was six billion. It would go down, if a hundred percent of the business personal property tax was gone, it would take it down to five point four. Excuse me, that's the county. The city went from one point one billion down to seven hundred ninety-one million, so pretty significant drop, about thirty, it looks like about thirty million dollar drop in our assessed value. So what that does is, you know, what we've been doing is adding to our assessed value, which makes the rate go down, and all of us pay less. Well, this is the exact opposite. So by reducing the assessed value, our tax rate will go up significantly. In fact, I think there was an estimate, you know, we're at like a dollar twenty-seven, but our total rate in the community is two forty-nine, and that's the county and all the other units that we pay into. If we lost, let's just say twenty-five percent of the assessed value, it'd go up to two dollars and sixty-three cents, it'd go fourteen cents. If we lost fifty percent, it'd go up to two ninety-eight, about fifty cents, and if we eliminated all the business personal property tax, it would go up to three twenty-one, about seventy, seventy-two cents. So there's significant impact on our circuit breaker, on our tax rate, on our assessed value, and on the property taxes, residential property taxes, for those residents who are not under the one percent. So I'd ask you to take a look at that, digest that. Now, I will tell you that there are several bills. There's a House bill that's going to the floor. There is also a Senate bill, or there will probably be a Senate bill to that. The House and the Senate, I don't believe, agree totally on this thing. Don't know what's gonna happen, but as several years ago, when there was a similar threat, AIM came out with a replace, don't erase. In other words, if you're going to eliminate business personal property tax, then you need to replace that revenue with something else. And if you get on to aimindiana.org backslash business, B P P T, Business Personal Property Tax, it goes through that whole campaign, and there are counties, school corporations, libraries, I think there's twenty-six state taxing unit organizations that are on board with that. We're all coming together on that. One thing they've asked us to do is, as a council, pass a resolution that we're opposed to the elimination of the business personal property tax. So I will be bringing this resolution to the council at the next meeting, but I wanted you, I sent you a copy of the resolution, and I sent you a copy of the report, so I'd ask that you take a look at that. Again, I can't tell you what exactly is gonna happen, if any, anything. There's been some discussion that this should not occur until next year during a budget year, because to create a replacement mechanism, it's gonna impact budget policy, and that's not something that's typically done in an off year, a short year. So I don't know what's gonna happen. This thing could fail, but if you listen to the governor last week, on his day of the state, he talked about the reduction of business personal property tax. So we'll have to stay tuned, but, you know, we've got, we've got bonds that are pledged with these dollars, so we can't just pull the rug out from under that revenue source. Jeremy, I know you've been watching this pretty closely, but again, I wanted to make you all aware of this. We haven't really talked too much about it. This session is fast and furious, and, you know, things could come up pretty quickly. So I'm going to ask at the next meeting if you all would take a look at that and pass this. The other thing I wanted to bring up, I met with the council committee on the ARPA funding, and we've gone through what you all approved, allocated in the budget for this year, and, excuse me, we're breaking some of that down and shifting some of that around. We'll get that information out to you. We need to have a resolution for a spending plan for that ARPA money that I would also like to bring to the council next month. So I really meant to bring it tonight, but I didn't, I, some of the resolutions I've seen are extremely complex, others are very simple, so I'm putting a call to our consultants to see what they recommend. But you all having allocated the money, you know, that went through a public process, we certainly have a proposed spending plan that we would make public, but if the resolution needs to be detailed, then that's what we'll do. So you'll see that at the next meeting as well. Jack, you were, Cindy, I know you're on that group.
I'm quizzing through this, eliminating the tax, property tax of the business. So the way it would affect us is that we would not be getting as much revenue if that passed. Am I correct? And if we don't get enough revenue, we would either have to, we would most likely have to raise our rates, if we could, because there's also circuit breakers and other things that prevent us from doing so.
Right.
This could potentially be very, very damaging to all communities.
Take a look at the impact on the circuit breaker, and what that basically means is right now, we're losing, it's about seven hundred thousand, I think, a year. That could go crazy, because all these residences would be pushed up against their circuit breaker. So as an example, let's say your house is worth a hundred thousand dollars, and right now, if you're paying nine hundred in taxes, you could go a hundred more, but if you went to a thousand, you don't have to pay any more than a thousand. That's the one percent cap. So you go from nine hundred to a thousand, so your property taxes would go up, just again, a hundred bucks on a hundred thousand dollar house. But if it went up more because the assessed value had shrunk down, we couldn't collect that from you, which is what a circuit breaker is, which means now the city is not able to collect that revenue. So.
They could potentially force us into a corner where we could not pay for the obligations we've already got on.
Well, that's, you know.
I mean, that's worst case.
That's an unintended consequence, but they certainly are looking at, there's discussion in the House bill that they would go ahead and pay the taxes. We would get the revenue, and then the individual, the business owner, would then get a tax credit on his state income tax. So in essence, the state would eat that loss instead of the cities, and that's one mechanism for, that's in the House bill right now. But they're also talking about, not only that, not only the replacement revenue, but gradually reducing the amount. So right now, if you have a piece of equipment, you pay so much when it's new, and every year, it goes down a bit, and then it levels off at thirty percent, so you're always gonna be paying thirty percent of the value. They want to eliminate the floor and keep it so that it continues to drop down to zero. Some of the bills are only dropping it to twenty-five percent, but when you hear we eliminate the floor, that means that instead of everybody continuing to pay thirty percent, it will continue down to zero. And that's in one bill. Another bill reduces it to twenty-five, but they give a year of no business personal property tax as a way to incentivize development in Indiana. So there's everything, the Senate and the House have different versions, the Senate and the House have different versions within the Senate and the House, but study the bill. I don't remember the number, Jeremy, you remember the number offhand. It passed out of committee, and it's going to the floor, and then if that passes, then it'll go over to the Senate, and then, you know, all that works.
I think it's House Bill one oh oh one.
It is. One, I think it's one double oh two.
One double oh two.
So the low numbers are always the priorities, and one double oh two is the priority for the House. So I would take a look at this. Baker Tilly did a nice job with this. Take a look at what it'll do to the county, to the city, to our taxpayers, to our circuit breakers, and just, it's what'll happen, or what could happen. So we'll, I will bring this resolution.
When will they vote on that?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's on the floor. They could vote. I mean, like I said, it's a short session, and it's my understanding, things have to be, I think by January twenty-ninth, they have to be done and flipped to the other, you know, to the other side. So the Senate bills will have to be sent over to the House, but I think the session's done by the end of February. So I would keep an eye on that. All right. Back to the ARPA, I know I, again, we had, we've had a couple discussions with the committee, and again, I'll get that information out kind of the final, the way it's broken down. And something to keep in mind is that, you know, these funds are gonna be flexible, as far as, you know, we're going to, we're gonna ask you to look at these projects, but the amounts are gonna be rounded amounts, you know, we don't have detail on a lot of these projects, and we can certainly shift the funds at a public meeting at your discretion if something comes up, or if we don't, say we don't end up spending as much, or need to spend as much, or it gets delayed. You know, there's a lot of issues with public projects now, as far as getting things ordered, getting work started, you know, it can take some time. So, but we'll discuss these projects at length at the next meeting, so you understand how we've looked at this. And it's not too far off of what we proposed in your budget book, so you can get an idea there, but we'll be, kind of have it narrowed down and have some discussion, and I'll ask you to pass that spending plan, and we can get moving on this.
Mayor, you might also remember that between when we even got that report, that there was the final, 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 maybe, rule.
Oh, good point.
That we get to use all of our money as revenue replacement.
So, great point, Lynn. We had Baker Tilly do the analysis that of our three point four million, three point one was revenue replacement. Well, the Department of Treasury just issued their final rule, and they've given everybody ten million dollars to be used for revenue replacement. So it's actually, it's now a moot point of our three point four million. All of that can be used as revenue replacement, which means we have much more discretion on how we use those funds. So, yeah, that just came out, they're giving everybody an allowance, if you will, up to ten million dollars.
We're not receiving the ten million.
No.
But we can use, if they give us.
Yeah, you don't have to do a calculation if your, if your amount of funds are less than ten thousand dollars. You don't have to do a calculation. You can just put the whole thing in the revenue replacement bucket. Very clear in what they've sent out, that that's, so I think they're trying to spare a lot of people going through the gyrations of trying to figure out what's revenue replacement. So that'll be to our benefit, and it'll make it easier to utilize those funds for things that maybe weren't initially, how do I want to say it? You know, there was these very specific buckets, and we still have to do the reporting. We will still be very transparent with how we're. We will still be very transparent with how we're spending the money. We just won't, the Department of Treasury guidelines won't apply as we thought they would initially. Thanks, Lynn. I appreciate it. That's a good point. All right. Anybody else? Saloni, got anything for us?
I'm ready to grab my story, so you know.
Can I ask, can you give, provide us an update on the streetlights that we have the corrosion problems with?
Um, yeah, we've met with the engineer, and we're waiting to hear back from the salesman to find out what our next steps are as far as costs and so forth, replacement costs, and, yeah, it's, we're still dealing with the company, but they've been very good. They've sent structural engineers down to look. They've been very responsive and very timely, I would say, as well. They've been very good, so we're just kind of waiting to hear the final from them.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, with that, anything from you?
No, sir.
Are you sure?
Absolutely.
All right. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Submove.
Second.
All right. Thank you. All right.
You know, I was driving along Market Street, the streetlights there are on those little concrete, I never noticed that before, but we talked about it at one time, and I...
Yeah, you know, when they're on grass, they put them up on those little pedestals. But at the end, that is one problem.